Oh, really?
Yeah.
This looks really good. I hadn't been in a while.
He could spend a lot of money on this.
Oh, I bet you that guy's.
He's been, he's, he's had some medical issues and his wife died.
Yeah.
And, um, he's, he's highly involved in the wall, so.
How's that coming? Do you need volunteers? Cause my son needs some volunteer hours.
He needs volunteer hours?
Yeah.
Can he lift heavy sections? We, I think if we need, um, I don't know, Ray Diiguano is keeping all that, but, uh, we need, uh, very much help to set the wall up and then disassemble it. Need twenty, twenty, they gotta be eighteen.
Okay, that takes him out.
Alright, but he can do other stuff. No, we can, we can have him do other stuff.
Yes, you could get community service stuff for a school.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah. That wasn't paid, that wasn't pennants for the athletic art issue.
Now, can his. I'm like you, David, I, I don't mind having a little icicle hanging.
Yeah, man, I like it cold.
Nothing virtual guns for this game. I said, idiot. I said, I can understand if you want something that you would like. So, the sport is out.
Right.
So, he's out weeding today, then he's coming to work with me, so.
Sorry.
I sit there and clearly we're not talking.
Did you find the holes?
That's bad.
Did you find the holes?
Oh, this thing?
Yeah.
There's a lot.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yep.
Like, the whole back section.
Yeah, like four.
Yeah.
The three, the three most important areas.
There is. Did you kinda notice that?
Uh-huh. Oh, yeah. He got an email from me.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was wondering, I'm thinking, I hope this is the final round.
No, it's not. It's the same draft that when he came and gave it a little bit of the pony, they haven't put any additional.
And how long ago was that?
February.
I thought it was a while.
Pissed, pissed me off.
Oh, I was, I, yes, I was irritated.
So, yeah, he got an email.
I was like, at least clean up those back sections.
Yeah, well, no, you gotta, all, I mean, it's just all, all.
Yeah, we can, we'll chat about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All.
I now call the Powhatan County Planning Commission meeting to order. Uh, Mr. Van Gelder will lead us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance and direction in our collective effort to be good stewards of the public trust, make fair and wise decisions, and to keep Powhatan a wonderful place to live and work. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. We need to approve the June meeting minutes. Have you guys had a chance to look at that or any questions or alter amendments on the minutes? I move we approve the June 7th, 2016 meeting minutes. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Altman, anything to note on the monthly activity report?
Nothing of any great interest, I don't think, but we are continuing to see residential permits come in at a steady pace, uh, but as noted last time, no new real subdivision activities, but we're having a lot of infill development.
We've got one, we've got one commercial site plan filed.
One commercial.
What kind of, what kind of?
Would it?
I'll think of Fort Meade.
Okay. Word from Ed.
Putting him in the spot.
Okay. Any, um.
Jimmy Snack was doing a building right in.
In the village.
Flat Rock.
For Flat Rock?
Flat Rock.
Okay. Um, any amendments to the tonight's meeting?
No, ma'am.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we will move on to the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing there is no one, I'll close the public comment period. Uh, any presentations? Seeing none, we'll move on to our public hearings.
Good evening. We have, uh, three conditional use permits tonight. Uh, first, sixteen oh one CUP, it's Virginia Solar LLC, uh, solar energy farm, subject property, uh, is the same you're familiar with, Scott one, this is Scott two, A-ten ag district. And this was, I've seen your packets, it shows, uh, the installation, the limits, and the access point, uh, which is shared with Scott one to thirteen. Obviously, a much closer, uh, view, uh, site plan of, uh, the facility. You can see the buffer, uh, lines, wetlands, et cetera, and this also, of course, is in your packet. These are the same pictures, uh, that I took for Scott one, um, showing the access off of thirteen, and it's, obviously, buildings have been removed now, the house is removed, uh, they're further along. I did hear information, Dave, maybe the road's been put through. This likewise is, our, our pictures is refresh your memory, installation we took, Philip Morris, um, view of how the facility will be. Solar energy farm, of course, is a conditional use in the A-ten. This farm would use two hundred thirty acres of the eight hundred ninety-four point four total. My primary access is indicated will be from future road, uh, through the three point six acre parcel that will connect, uh, to thirteen, uh, and that will actually be, and I think it's in the process right now of being combined with the bigger parcel. Comprehensive plan, uh, shows subject properties, rural residential, countywide land use, it's in general accord, uh, institutional uses, our list is appropriate in the rural residential. Reviewing agencies had no outstanding concerns with this request. Uh, staff has received a few phone calls, emails, and visits from citizens in regard to this request, uh, but they have been very few in comparison to Scott one. Staff does recommend that, uh, the list of conditions be adopted should the planning commission approve the conditional use permit, um, and Mr. Mears does have a presentation following mine, uh, but I'm available for questions, uh, at any time now or after his presentation.
Thank you. I think we'll hear his presentation and then open it up to questions.
Well, thanks again for your time. I was looking, it was six months ago to the day that we were here last time for Scott one, so, we're back. I'm gonna try to keep this pretty brief since a lot of these slides are the same, I just wanna make sure they, you have them all on the record again. Um, well, these are the exact same, Virginia Solar, we have not changed, uh, we are still developing solar projects in Virginia. Uh, electricity still flows the same way it did, uh, six months ago, and we are still developing solar projects in Virginia because Virginia is becoming economically competitive, uh, or solar's becoming economically competitive within the state. Uh, why we're here, same as last time, you know, good electrical infrastructure and it's consistent with your zoning. Visual impact, um, same as we've discussed last time, obviously, these solar projects do have a visual impact, uh, it's our intention to mitigate them. Um, I'll get, actually, I think, believe that's the next slide. Uh, actually, it's not, Max's dense drawing, which David just showed. Uh, this is the next slide I was referring to. Um, we agreed, uh, to have much larger buffers, uh, for this project, and the buffers will not be cut, uh, before we, uh, start construction, so all the buffers there will be all native buffers, they're all, all native trees, um, and they're, in general, they are much wider than what we had, uh, for Scott one. Scott one, we only had fifty feet, most of the buffers here are actually more than a hundred feet, um, some of them are quite far. Um, the only place that's actually at fifty feet is adjacent to Mr. Hersler's land, which is to the south. Construction, uh, pile driving still makes noise, as we discussed last time. Um, again, we are agreeing to exactly the same, uh, I believe it was exactly the same, uh, noise that was, uh, approved by the board of supervisors, the same restrictions. Um, again, during operation, there will be almost no noise. Decommissioning, uh, same language as last time, we, you know, we accept that we're gonna have to post a security of some form in order to, uh, remove the facility when it's done at the end of its operational life. Um, to address the same questions we got last time, you know, we're not gonna create a massive, uh, heat sink, no, it's not like a parking lot, the solar panels will be cooled, uh, by the air flowing around them, there'll be native vegetation under them unlike the picture, and the same amount of water that falls from the sky will still hit the ground, it's not going to cause it to run off any quicker, um, we will not be using, uh, any real water, uh, once the project is in, in operation during construction, they'll be using some water to keep the dust down, to keep the neighbors happy. This solar still compatible with animals, um, animals don't have a major problem with This is in your, um, uh, this was provided to you last time, but it was the same basic, you know, we're gonna be, the major benefit to the, uh, to the county is the rollback taxes, approximately forty thousand dollars, it's eight thousand six hundred dollars worth of additional real estate tax this year, or per year. Uh, a little bit different from last time, we're being the, we, we do not intend to, David just said, the, the, we actually intend to only use two hundred and thirty of the three hundred and sixty acres that we're getting, um, permitted. The last time, uh, Mr. Cox, you said, oh, you know, we wanna be very clear here, we're taking that whole three hundred and sixty out of land use this time. That's just to be clear, last time we did it, we only took that one eighty strip, this time we're taking the full three sixty out, mainly as a symbol to provide the county with more revenue and make it more economically advantageous to the county. Um, the other, there's no burdens to the county as we discussed last time, and also importantly this time, well, importantly, we are gonna be making a, uh, contribution to the fire district, the firehouse number one, uh, forty thousand dollars, uh, they wanna buy some equipment, it sounded like a Jaws of Life type thing, but I really don't know what it was, but, you know, it's a forty thousand dollar donation to them to be able to make that, or make that acquisition. Uh, we had a community meeting, um, back in May, uh, I will say three people showed up, it was much, three people that were not county staff or, uh, on the planning commission or the board of supervisors, so three citizens actually showed up, that was, um, a bit surprising compared to our experience in Scott one, uh, and even more remarkable, all of their comments were in support of the project, or trying to lease us additional land for the project, interestingly enough. Um, so that was a major non-event, which was shocking. Uh, again, you know, we've, this is from last time, the access will be through, uh, the, what we call the Hable parcel, um, it will come straight off thirteen to minimize the impact on neighbors. Uh, we, again, will have a construction plan to minimize, you know, the traffic concerns, um, everything, all the employee parking, all of that will be on-site, just like last time. Um, showing the project's schedule, how the two projects interrelate with each other, as y'all may be aware, uh, Scott one, uh, received its SEC approval, uh, last week, so Dominion, according, has to have it online by December of this year, so they, I expect them to see some pretty rapid progress in the, in the construction. Um, we do not plan to start, uh, doing any, um, construction work until the March timeframe of next year, with the real heart of it being, uh, about this time next year, next summer. That's when we actually plan to have the main construction going on, so there will be a period where there's nothing going on in January and February. This is summary slide, it's actually new to y'all, but something I've used in some of the other presentations, which is, the summary is, you're not gonna be able, once this thing's built, you aren't gonna be able to hear it, see it, smell it, know it's there. Um, the county is not burdened with any additional costs due to this project, and there is a slight economic benefit in the, in the increased, uh, real estate taxes, um, and frankly, we support the conditions that David has put forth, and we're fine with them.
Why don't we have our public hearing first and then we'll, um, open it up to any questions? That being said, we'll now, um, open the public hearing up. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward and state your name for the record. Gotta come forward and state your name.
My name is Susan.
Right up to the mic, sorry.
My name is Susan Shepperson. I'm just, can I see a map of the final thing that they've done? Is there one available that I can look at?
When, uh, we open it up to questions, we can have them put one up that you can see.
Okay, cause it's hard for me to see when it's up there.
Okay.
I wanna see as far as my property goes.
Where it is?
Where it is, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have that? Okay, I can look at it here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing there is no one, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, that being said, uh, questions for staff or the applicant?
I have, uh, questions for Mr. Mears when he finishes with Mrs. Shepperson.
Okay. Do you, and you have questions for staff? Okay.
Wait.
Hey, Mr. Mears?
Yes.
Can you?
Sorry.
Thanks.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Mr. Mears, in your description of the project, okay, in your application, uh, you said that the power, uh, will, excuse me, I've lost my place here, uh, but essentially that the power was going to be used by.
Local.
Powhatan residents first, and then the remainder would be out on the grid, that's, that's a solar one situation, is it not?
Yeah.
This is a wholesale?
Yeah, this is gonna be sold in the wholesale markets, that's correct.
So, and we picked that up in the staff report, so that's something we should probably correct when it goes to the board of supervisors. Second question.
Mm-hmm.
Really has to do with the transportation side.
Okay.
Uh, when I looked at solar one versus solar two, uh, the amount of construction goes up dramatically, and I was just curious, uh.
Really? Should it go up?
Yeah, it says the total trips and construction in solar one are described as twelve thousand eight hundred and fourteen, uh, and in solar two, they're twenty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five.
Probably because I gave us more time to build it, we're not gonna be in nearly as rush, and most of the trips are those, uh, the, the workers going to site every day, so that's why it went up.
So, you have more time?
At more time.
More trips, okay.
Yes.
It just, the, the change in numbers.
Sorry.
It's neither good nor bad, just.
Yeah.
Those are my questions.
Okay.
I had, I had one. Piles, we talked about that last time as well, and how deep did you say they were going to be, on average?
Oh, um, actually, we just did pile testing last week, um, I think we're, on average, it's gonna be five and a half feet is what we're estimating right now for the site.
That would be fairly shallow then.
Yes.
Hopefully, that'll help minimize the.
It shouldn't take long.
The driving, it shouldn't, okay.
Yeah. And they were actually, they were driving each pile in about twenty-one seconds, it was going really, really well.
Five feet is not deep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
No, but.
Okay, alright. Mr. Cox, this is in your area, district.
Uh, I'd, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve, uh, CUP sixteen dash oh one, Virginia Solar LLC. Uh, I make this, uh, in terms of public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, second case this evening, sixteen oh two. Um, this is actually a request to amend fifteen oh six CUP, uh, which is the conference center, Debra Blanton Gordon, subject property, uh, is zone A-ten agricultural. And this is the site plan, uh, original site plan, no change in, in that. Uh, also, the zoning map, general area map. And this is, uh, pictures from the original case, just to refresh your memory on this, access points. Structures, the barn, parking lot, the house, it's involved in, uh, this conference center. The applicant would like to amend the current restriction of no more than sixty events serving more than twenty-five persons per year, uh, and this is a restriction that is imposed by health department recommendation, not, uh, Powhatan County planning zoning. Also, the applicant would like the conditional use permit to be issued in the name of Fairview Farms Holdings LLC, uh, to enable, uh, family to participate, their children. Comprehensive plans, rural preservation, countywide land use plan, uh, it's in general accord with the comprehensive plan. The health department will not support a change of condition number fourteen, uh, which is the one that's indicated, the restriction on events, uh, until completion of well and septic upgrades. Uh, staff has received no comments from citizens regarding this request. Staff has indicated in the report that the issue with the well in particular, uh, is delayed, um, the septic, uh, and applicant can speak to this with further detail, should be sooner this month taken care of, uh, but because of the well situation, we do recommend, uh, planning commission to further request at this time, and I'm available for questions, the applicant is here as well, as I said, for any additional questions.
Thanks. Let's first have the public hearing before we do questions. Anyone wishing to speak on this case?
The applicant wanna speak?
Um, would the applicant care to speak, make a statement?
I think we got some questions.
Okay, thanks. Um, anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward and state your name for the record. Seeing there is no one, we'll close the public hearing. Now open the questions to the staff and applicant. I have a couple, you go first.
I do too.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, maybe just hear a little bit more about where you are with the water system, I, is this going to, I'll wait for you to come up, so. I, I guess I share the concerns staff has with the water system.
Yeah.
Is this gonna be, is this gonna be a public system?
Yes, yes. It's a public well system, the state is running far behind, um, and I think we've, you, they're dealing with one now on Academy Road, and it's dragging out for months.
I've seen that happen.
So, I talked to the gentleman at the state, latter part of last week, he got the design from the engineer, uh, we were waiting on the state to give us all the test results, and we got those early last week, the engineer turned it around, got him to the representative for the state water control board by the end of the week, talked to him on Friday, and he says he's shorthanded, and he's a minimum two months, anywhere between two and three months, before he can look at the design and okay it. The good thing about it, the engineer expressed to me and, and the gentleman with the state water control board too, uh, the engineers are already dealing with him on this other one, so he knows what he wants, so.
Is this the health department, the health department, not the Department of Environmental Quality, right?
This is the state water control board, and then the health department's also dealing with the septic situation, which comes through Chesterfield County.
The health department, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Altman, the health department will be permitting the public water system?
As far as we know, yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure of how it's, how it's going through, I know, I'm pretty sure the state is gonna sign off on it.
Yeah, it's usually typically the health department that will, that will approve your water system.
Okay.
There'll be an engineering sheet and this type of thing, and realize that there'll be limitations in that, if it's gonna be a public water system.
Right.
Uh, who's gonna operate that system?
What do you mean by operate?
Well, typically, you'd have an operator if it's a public water system, has regular testing requirements, but it goes into the realm of being a public system, it has.
Whatever the state's requiring on that, I mean, basically, he may require, uh, periodic testing, um, but I haven't seen his comments to the, uh, engineer's, uh, design yet, so I don't know what, I'm not sure what size pump he wants to put in, I mean, um, I'll get him to send me that because now that he has done it, I'll at least get it out for pricing so that once the state has reviewed it, and if there's a few little tweaks, that's fine, but at least I can have a contractor on board to get started on that as soon as possible.
I would suggest you also talk to the engineer about, uh, their operation going forward and stuff like that, what, what you're gonna need to do and those type things, just, so you're fully informed what's going on.
Yeah.
Trying to give you a heads up on it.
Nah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And so that the septic system is almost done, right?
Well, the septic system, um, I'm gonna do that, I've kinda, I've been putting it off, waiting on this water thing, but then after I found it, it's gonna take two months minimum, um, I was planning on going ahead and put that in sometime this month, I mean, that, I can get that done pretty easily.
Any other questions for the applicant while he's here? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
I have a question for Mr. Dameron. This has to do with, uh, the change in the name of the conditional use permit. Historically, uh, we have had CUPs that are non-transferable, and this is to make the CUP transferable.
I think it's to include more than transferable.
This, what it says in the applicant's statement is so that their children, okay?
Right.
So, since it looks like we're on the road to deferral, what I would like to see, uh, next time we look at this, is a discussion about, uh, transferability. I, I don't know that that's a bad thing, okay, I don't know that it's a good thing, but we have, we have a system where we have, we have not transferred them, okay, uh, and I'd like to know, from the staff perspective, uh, why we're making a change, uh, and the rationale for it. I, I, you know, I have no, I have no bias one way or the other at this point, but I think if we're, if we're going to look at something that we've done consistently over time and change it, that we, we should talk about it upfront.
Similar to that note, if it's going to Fairview Farms or whatever, if it's sold, does that change things? I mean, would that matter in the transfer as well? You know, like, I, kind of on Bill's point, you know, it wants to go to the kids, but what happens if they sell it as Fairview Farms, an actual business? So, I, I kind of, you know, would that be legally speaking? I was curious about that as well.
The, the important part of this, of course, being that we have a series of conditions for a conditional use permit.
Which have to be upheld.
And it's, it's important, uh, that we have clarity, uh, that everybody understands what they're getting into.
Mm-hmm.
And that they agree with it, and that's the reason for being very careful about, uh, the transferability, and so, that's, that's my concern.
Okay.
Well, I think probably, the, uh, in my experience with the state health department in certifying your water when I was in grade A license with the dairy business, I'm sure they're gonna have to issue that, that permit in whatever name.
Yes.
That's correct.
Would it be, uh, Mr. Altman, would it be more beneficial if the applicant requested the deferral instead of us being, he's gonna have a little more of a, you know, pulse on the timeline, is, I mean, instead of us kind of deferring it, we don't know, deferring it, we don't know, so I'm kind of wondering if it would behoove him to request it.
It could, and he has a better understanding, talking with his engineers about how long it's gonna be.
Okay.
And listening to him, it sounds like it's gonna be at least two months.
Two months, yeah.
Cause if we defer it, we have to set another time to hear it.
Yes.
And sadly, I'm sympathetic to how the health department moves.
You're right.
So, would you care to request the deferral?
Well, I think, what I'd like to do, and then I don't know if this can be done, and as far as the, well, we'll deal with this and then we'll do the other question, um, I'd like to have it set up, or if it can be arranged, so that once this, the, the state has approved it, then I've already got approval here, it's a based on, excuse me, it's can, it's based on that condition, the fact that the state has said, has issued the permit, and we've installed it according to the design of the engineer, which was approved by the state, and that way, at least we, that gains me the time, so that once the state has approved it, I'm good.
Right.
You know, that's, that's, being a conditional use, I figured it would be conditioned on that.
Sorry, that's not gonna happen.
I think we wanna see, you know, for, for your sake, as well as anything.
Yeah.
What the final product is gonna be, what the, the permit is, and I don't think it'll hold you up at all, I really don't.
Yeah.
I think, you know, once, once you get that established, you can let us know, we'll get, then we're not deferring each time.
Yeah.
And we'll get, you know, I personally would be happy to move on as quickly as possible to.
Yeah, well.
But I would, I would concur with, um, Mr. Van Gelder, I'd like to see a final.
Okay.
Plan of what it is gonna be, and discuss the, you know, transferability of this as well.
Yeah, and I don't know, you know, I don't know if it's easier just to, to ask to add a couple of kids on with it, or put it in the Holdings LLC.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something that would have to be worked out as well. And I would be happy to chat with you about this sometimes, I deal with water systems, be happy to discuss with you once sometime.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay.
So, I guess.
So, that being said, do you want, are you deferring it, or do you want us to defer it?
They can defer it. Thanks.
Okay. So, Mr. Altman, or Mr. Latchney, do I?
My recommendation would be defer it to.
As a planning commission?
Well, at, at his request, defer it, put it on the agenda two months out.
Okay.
That way it's there, and then if it's not ready, it can easily be deferred again, but that way it's, a deferral should always have a date certain where it's gonna reappear on the agenda.
Two months, would that work for you?
All right.
I don't do anything, 'cause he's deferred, right?
Yeah, do we do anything 'cause he's deferred, I mean, do we have to make a motion to defer it, correct?
Yeah, a motion needs to be made.
Yeah, you need to make a motion to defer it, yeah.
At the request of the applicant hereby moving to defer it.
At the request of the applicant, in accordance with section 83, 123-F4, the Powhatan zoning ordinance and public necessity, convenience, and general welfare, and good zoning practice, I recommend deferral of CUP 16-02.
Any questions?
Two months.
To the September meeting.
The September meeting, thank you, sir.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
This is, this is our last case, 1603 CUP, and obviously we're faced with a situation we were just discussing, staff put this, after discussion with Mr. Gordon, into Fairview Farm Holdings LLC, and this is obviously a new conditional use permit for a Country Inn, and this subject property is across the street from the existing conference center and Country Inn on another property owned by Mr. Gordon and his wife, which is A10, and it's 1659 Ballsville Road. This is the area map of the subject property, and where the address is indicated is the structure on the property that's a subject of this conditional use permit. This is a zoning overlay, you can see now for agricultural, if you didn't already know this, we have a nice green color, instead of the absence of color, and this signifies the A10 district. This is site plan submitted by the applicant. This is a view of the structure, obviously, has been used as a barn, this is a view down the road, both sides, across the street, and that is the parcel across the street that has been constructed, was Country Inn. Another view, Country Inn's conditional use in the A10 agricultural district, the proposed use fronts Ballsville Road, access will be from the existing driveway on the property, subject property shown as rural preservation or countywide land use plan, it is in general court with the comp plan. Reviewing agencies had no outstanding concerns with this request, staff had no outstanding concerns, obviously with the Fairview Farm Holdings now, it's subject for discussion, staff has received no formal comments in reference to this request. Notwithstanding the issue of the Fairview Farms, we do recommend that, should the planning commission approve the request, it's subject to the list of recommended conditions. And I'm available for questions, obviously the applicant is still here, also available.
Would the applicant care to speak on this request?
Just a question.
Okay. That being said, let's have the public hearing on this case, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing there is no one, I will close the public hearing, I have several questions.
Go ahead.
Are these, is this inn gonna fall under the new water and septic, the public?
That's my question.
It will not?
I'm gonna have Mr. Gordon, yeah, he's saying no, I didn't, I did not specifically discuss it, we didn't get any questions, or rather, any comments from Health Department on that, but he's.
Okay. Can you, yeah, I have a.
Let me come up.
Give me a little more details of what you're planning, I mean, it sounds good, what are you planning on doing with the barn?
It's basically gonna, we're gonna redo the loft into a two-bedroom, like a honeymoon suite.
Okay.
And it's treated just like a regular single-family dwelling, as far as the county doing with the Country Inn, so it'll have its own private septic and private well, that would be based on a two-bedroom dwelling.
Okay, and that's, you've talked to the Health Department, and that can be done over there on, there's not a problem, or it's already existing?
Any problem, I talked to all the building officials and everything, it's just a matter of laying it all out.
And that's all you're planning on doing with it?
Just making it into apartment up top, yeah.
Okay.
Underneath is just storage right now, we have to build that to satisfy the building apartment, put a fire-rated ceiling in there and stuff like that, but that's just construction stuff.
Because the Country Inn allows a lot more, right?
Right, yes.
I'm just a little confused on that.
Yeah, why, you.
Because it's, it's housing transient.
Okay.
People, they're there for a couple of nights, and that's it, and so.
You're allowed to have a restaurant there and all that kind of stuff under Country Inn, you're not planning on doing any of those things, or does that?
No, there's none of that, that's, it's just like, you saw a picture of the house that we did, which was the same thing, it's just that one's a three-bedroom house, just like, we built it as if we were gonna live in it, because we might at some time, but this is just gonna be a, just like a single-family dwelling, it's just gonna be in a loft of a barn.
Okay. Mr. Altman, you had?
I was gonna say, if there's a concern with the broad definition of the Country Inn with a restaurant, what, you could add a condition that limited the use of the Country Inn to the two-bedroom.
Would you be okay with that?
What was that?
Could you say it again, Mr. Altman?
Well, if there's a concern that we grant a CUP for the Country Inn, and it, which, under which you can do a restaurant.
Oh, no.
But you have no desire to do that, if it were okay, if we added a condition that limited the Country Inn to the two-bedroom.
Just a single-family dwelling, just called, just limits it to a single-family dwelling, because you can't have a restaurant in a single-family dwelling.
I would be happy with that. So limit it to the use of an inn with no restaurant.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Cox, you look like you had a question.
This was, what, what Brandon stood and called him adaptive reuse?
Adaptive reuse, yeah.
In fact, I got one I might do.
There you go, send people your way, they might want to stay there, they might want to stay there, we can send them your way.
Okay, all right, and, any questions, Mr. Walker? Good, okay.
Okay, in accordance with the planning zoning ordinance and public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice, I recommend approval with the added condition that we discussed, I recommend approval.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We didn't add the, I don't know, I guess.
Well, what?
This motion is based upon the general.
Oh.
But I guess it doesn't. He did, he said that.
I don't have my sheet, but I said.
Yes, he said.
I apologize.
Enough of it.
One of the things you can do too, the, the staff gives you a recommended resolution or motion.
Yeah.
And you just say, I make the motion recommended by the staff, it always, they always put the special language in there, so if you want to save yourself a second in the motion, say we hereby move, make the motion that's contained in the staff report, if you do that.
I like that.
Well then.
Yeah.
After all these.
I can actually remember that.
Tom, that might be a good little nugget you just gave us tonight.
Because like at the board level, it's always in the resolution, so they don't actually say the words, because they say move to approve the resolution, the resolution.
So you don't have to see us fumbling.
Well, I guess I was only planning commission 10 years, we never did it till.
Good stuff.
Oh.
The other thing, just FYI, you only have to say it when you're approving, never have to say it when you're denying, never have to say it when you're deferring, only time those words are necessary is on the.
On the approval, that this is based upon the public necessity, okay?
So you don't have to do it on, for, if I move to deny, don't need it.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
So noted.
All right. Any other business before we move on to our workshop? Okay, workshop?
Where we going?
Are we, yep, cool, let's do it.
Williams, man, ever since you said it, I want them, we're down there.
How've you been, Alvin? I haven't chatted with you in a month or so.
I made a sort of note, I don't think it's legal, I don't think it's legal to prohibit transfer, because it's a land use thing.
I don't know, in this instance. I have this discussion all the time with a couple of other county attorneys, we're discussing the philosophy of it, we're discussing the philosophy of it, and we said, well, technically, it's a rezoning, so the question was, could we rezon a piece of property, is we rezoning to seed, but only if you, if you transferred, and then this, this is the only place that.
They're all kind of key transfer.